With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing and please join me in a moment of silence in honor of the two law enforcement officers who were viciously murdered this past week. Please keep them in your prayers and their souls and their families that they left behind. Rest in peace Officer Miosoto Familia and State Trooper Joel Davis. Thank you. Okay, at this time I'd like to set the, well, be advised there'll be no workshop meeting for the month of August and the next board meeting will be held Monday, August 7th at
Should I set it into the record? I will not be in attendance for that.
No, that is not necessary. Well, we have like two minutes to our public hearing or one minute to our public hearing. What time do you have there? Oh, you don't have a watch either?
No, I don't have a watch, Mayor.
Okay.
You have your watch on?
Nope.
It's 7:05.
It's on.
Okay. 7:05, we're going to open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to chapter 266. Point 62 point 1 regarding site plan regulations expiration time periods. Local law 4 of 2017 amending that chapter, site plan regulations, expiration of time periods.
We've been slowly but surely going through our local laws and making necessary changes, or at least recommended changes until the board acts, that's all they are. One of the things, and typically what'll happen is we'll experience something and look at the code and realize that the code doesn't address it or should be more clear about what its intent was. So this issue deals with, once a site plan is approved by the planning board, how much time does an applicant have to get that site plan signed and then apply for a building permit? Another issue is, once the site plan is signed and they start building, when do they have to complete it? And if they don't complete it, do they have to come back before the planning board for what's called reinstatement of a revoked site plan? So what you have before you are recommended changes. That said, I also had the village's planning board attorney, Rob Magrino, review it and he came up with a change to number 2, which would read expiration of resolutions granting final approval. A planning board resolution which grants final site plan approval shall expire 180 days after the date of planning board resolution of approval unless the site map has been signed by the planning board chairperson. Said time period may be extended for two periods of not more than 90 days each upon application to the planning board for such extension. Now, that is a material change to what's before you. So state law prohibits us from adopting a local law which has a material change at that meeting. It would have to be done at the earliest at the next meeting. So in terms of action, you can certainly give, you could type this action under seeker as a type 2 action, not requiring further review under seeker. That could be done by motion. And my recommendation would be to follow that up either by opening it up to the public and then continuing the public hearing or just to continue the public hearing to August 7th at 7:05 PM.
So do you recommend that we just continue, read the, what the changes, the proposed changes?
Which I just did.
And then continue the public hearing?
The first thing that I would do is type the action as a type 2 action.
By motion.
Yes. Not requiring any further review under seeker.
Okay, do I have a motion to type?
To declare.
To declare type 2 action with no further review under seeker.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so at this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to this?
Okay, so a motion to continue the public hearing with regard to amending chapter 266 point 62 point 1 regarding site plan regulations expiration time periods to August 7th, 2017 at 7:05 at Suffolk Village Hall.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Fred made that motion?
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is this the correct time for the, for this?
Yes.
No, here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll move on. The fire department, they are busy this evening, they're not able to attend, but they are doing fine. Culture and Recreation.
Got to walk a little further. Say again? That's okay, I know. I just didn't want to be in the aisle.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, so a few things that we have coming up. Tonight, we started Clifford Theater. They are practicing upstairs in the community room tonight and then from tomorrow night on until the performances, they're going to be here in the auditorium. So we might hear piano playing this evening, so we're looking forward to that. The performances are going to be on Friday, August 4th and Saturday, August 5th, both at 7:00 PM. So we're doing fame this year, so we're looking forward to a great performance.
Okay.
The Walk with the Mayor will be on Wednesday, July 12th. Everyone will meet here at Village Hall to meet up with our mayor and the walk starts at 7:00 PM. So anyone that's available, if you'd like to join, we are more than happy to see new people on our walk. The next concert in the park is July 13th and that's Reflections, the Big Band, and that will be at 7:00 PM at the gazebo. Family Day at the Pool will be on Sunday, July 16th, so it's this coming Sunday. Activities are between 12 and 3. Everyone is invited from the board. The Kids Pool Party will be on Tuesday, July 18th. The Magicians, Silly Willie, will be there and that starts at 6:30 PM. We are having our Broadway trip with Clifford Theater and that's on July 23rd. It's really exciting, we're going to see Charlie and the Chalka Factory and this is part of the Clifford Theater experience that we're, that we're having. It's going to be a great day, so we're looking forward to going on that trip on July 23rd. The concert after that will be Magic Touch on Wednesday, July 26th, and that is the Acapella Band and that's also at 7:00 PM at the gazebo. And then we also have the last one of the season, we always finish it off with the children's concert, and it will be Kurt Gallagher at the gazebo at 7:00 PM. And that's July 31st, this is a Monday. So lots of things happening, the pool is open, the pool is thriving this year, we haven't had many rains, so far tonight might have been a little bit of a glitch, so we're really, really happy with the pool this year. A lot of good feedback.
And the enrollment is up, so that's a, that's a good sign for our recreation staff and the pool itself that we have so many residents joining the pool and wanting to come out and
We really are.
Use our, use the pool.
Yes.
That's great. And the concert, the Country Fresh Concert was excellent.
They were fantastic.
For those of you who attended.
That was a huge crowd, that was a great crowd
Yeah.
At the beginning of the season, so we're really happy about it.
Excellent, excellent job.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody have anything?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, you do?
Kathy, how did the yoga in the park go?
Yoga in the park?
How did the yoga in the park finish up?
I'm sorry.
Yoga?
Yoga? The yoga in the park?
The yoga in the park, I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear that. The yoga in the park was four nights. The first night was in the community center, it was lightly attended, then the next week it rained, it was better attended. The third week was pretty good and then the last week was a nice, was a nice turnout. So I think there's interest there, we really hope that people saw it, heard about it, and then if we can do it again, possibly in the fall when the weather gets a little cooler, it might be something to pick back up. But it was a nice, a nice thing for the village to have gazebo in the, to have yoga in the park. We were, we were happy to, to bring that to the, to the, to the village.
Great.
Yep.
Yeah, great job.
Yep. And then for the next thing, we have the Summer Youth Employment Program in the village. Carla Alliance will be our intern this summer.
Right.
So I guess, Dan, that would be, I guess, to do a resolution?
There's a resolution.
Okay. Do we have this resolution? Do we have it in the pack here?
You have it, it should be, but I'll hand it to mine.
Oh, okay. No, this is good.
You have mine.
All right, so we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with the County of Rockland for Rockland County Summer Youth Program, Summer Youth Employment Program from July 10th through August 23rd. Resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to sign an agreement with the County of Rockland for Rockland County Summer Youth Employment Program. This agreement is for one youth employee, Carla Alliance, whose overall responsibilities and duties will be office work, filing, assisting staff, and computer work. The County of Rockland will reimburse the village of Suffolk at a rate of 100% for wages paid for a maximum of 25 hours per week during that period of July 10th through August 23rd, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, any discussion?
Yeah, just to be clear, we don't have that contract yet.
Right. It's, from my understanding?
So whatever you can do to expedite that.
I will check with the county again, okay.
And as you recall, last year, the one that did come in said 50%.
Correct, and then we revised it to 100%.
Yeah.
So yes, we do expect to have 100% again this year.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Fred Rella, our grant writer.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Earlier this month, we applied for a grant called the Downtown Revitalization Initiative and basically the state has a economic development council and they divide the state up into 10 areas, geographic areas. We're in the mid Hudson area, which comprises about six counties, okay? So it's like Rock and Orange, Westchester, Putnam, Ulster. And the Downtown Revitalization Initiative was offering one grant per region, there's 10 of them, for $10 million for downtown revitalization. They offered this opportunity last year and the city of Middletown was actually awarded the grant.
I can see where this is going.
Yeah.
Are you going to tell us we got it?
We got it. Not yet, they haven't announced who, but they should announce it within the next two weeks, hopefully. This year, we have an awful lot of support for our application that we put in. I think it's on point and whatnot, but just to give you an idea, I have the major employers, the Salvation Army, Good Samaritan Hospital, and Avon all supported the application. Ramapo Central School District did, Seven Woman Jaffe, Senator Carlucci, the town of Ramapo, the RBA, the REDC, the Suffolk Chamber, the BFW, the Lions Club, American Legion, and so we have an awful lot of support for it and I've been working a little bit behind the scenes trying to promote it, so we'll see what happens.
Okay.
You know, you've got to be in it to win it.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Right. We were at a workshop, I guess it was about a month ago, and we were talking about the Department of Defense 1033 program, and that's a surplus inventory program that the police departments and municipalities can participate in where they can get excess inventory from the Department of Defense. Everything ranging from vehicles to computer equipment to filing cabinets.
And one tank.
To boats, weaponry, ammunition, and the like, so. But it has to be excess inventory and it is run through the police department. So I've been working quite a bit with Chief Osborne, there are several agreements that we're working through and they're all going to be up to Albany on this Friday. I've worked with a few other municipalities in this and actually the village of Tuxedo Park is getting a boat because they have a couple of lakes up there.
If they're getting a boat, we should be able to get a Black Hole helicopter.
We need a full day to handle it, I think, in five or six months.
I see no reason to.
But it's a very good program and the Suffolk Police Department has participated several Right, but it's a very good program and hopefully we'll see some nice benefits from The last thing, which I'm very happy to announce, is the Community Development Block Grants were awarded for 2017 and on the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project, we were awarded $174,720.
Wow.
So that was like phase two. Phase one, last year we were awarded 110. So you add the two together and we got $284,720. So very pleased with that, it was much more than I had anticipated.
Come on, Fred. Give yourself a little more credit. It's one of only 10 projects that they approved in the entire county for a municipality.
Thank you. So, so that was really great news that we received this week. One of the things about the award is, in order to even apply for a Community Development Block Grant, you have to sign a cooperation agreement with the county, okay? And we signed one, it must be 10 years ago, and if it doesn't change, it renews itself automatically year after year after year, you don't have to do anything. Well, they changed it this year slightly. Some players pulled out of the consortium and so they, they changed the agreement slightly. So we have to enter into a new agreement with them, okay? And you have the agreement before you and a resolution saying that it's okay for the mayor to sign the agreement and to move forward with it.
It's a resolution.
It's a little bit like joining a baseball team. You have to be a member of the baseball team, that's the agreement, and then when you get up to bat, that's actually applying the, in an application. So if we don't, if we don't do the agreement, then we can't put in applications and we won't be given the monies.
Okay.
So you have a resolution before you?
Yes, so I have the resolution here authorizing the acceptance of the 2017 CDBG Cooperation Agreement for Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Improvements. That's it?
That's it.
Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Cooperation Agreement is an agreement between the County of Rockland and the Village of Suffolk with an effective date of June 1st, 2017, providing grant funding in an amount of $174,720 to finance Wayne Avenue Sidewalk improvements. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk does hereby authorize the mayor to execute any and all required documentation approved as to form and content by the village attorney for the acceptance by the Village of Suffolk of the CDBG Cooperation Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Rella.
Virginia, do you have those contracts on you?
I think we've already signed it in his gun.
Can we get it?
Fred's already got the contract, don't you?
I can hear it.
He says he wanted the contract to be signed, we already have it.
Oh, yes, yes, I have that.
Do you have it?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you give him a copy of the resolution as well?
I haven't given it to him yet.
Okay, I'm going to give it to him.
Yeah, I'll need a copy of that resolution tomorrow because I gotta hand deliver it.
I know, well, I'll take yours.
I'm going to give it to you right now.
Hold on. Here.
Is it just as easy for me to give you mine there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Fire con Dios.
Fred, thank you, you've been doing a great job and I know a lot of work goes into, into the grants and the processing and the applications, but thank you very much, you're doing a great job. Really a great help for the village.
I just have some informational items tonight and I just want to thank Fred. We've been working on this 1033 program for a little while, but Fred has made this painless, I'll be honest with you. It can be a little bit overwhelming sometimes, the paperwork and the amount you have to do, any information. I want to thank you, Fred, because we sat down this morning again to finalize what we need to do and I want to thank you for leading us through it because it really is a very advantageous program for the village at no cost. So thank you, I want to thank Fred for everything. Mayor and Board, today we conducted a commercial vehicle check and the mayor stopped down and checked on us this morning. We did a commercial vehicle check at the corner of Wayne and Orange Ave and across from Curly's and Hall of Place. We took numerous trucks out of service, issued numerous safety violations, and the trucks that we were focusing on were 202, Orange Ave, and 59. They seemed to all come right together right there. We were assisted by the New York State Department of Transportation, DOT, sends us three Level 1 inspectors, Level 1 is the highest level inspector, they provided for us at no cost. So it was a great day to get some of these trucks off the road for the safety of our motorists and our roadways as well. We have some dispatcher training coming up, we try to keep all of our personnel, not just officers, but dispatchers apprised of their current information on techniques, trends, things that they need to know as dispatchers. We have three dispatchers, our full timers, going to a five-day training course at the Rockland County Police Academy this month to backfill their positions, we will be using part-time dispatchers and officers. So it's not going to be any cost to us at all. I want to keep up on that and, oh, Mayor, we have spoken about that before, the part-time dispatchers and the full-time dispatchers, trying to get them more training.
Yes, I think that was negotiated recently in that contract also, which
That was.
Really helps the village residents in, in regards to emergencies when they do call 911 or they do call the station house, that they have a trained, which they do have, trained professionals there, but to enhance their training just is a great asset for the village.
It is, and I appreciate the support because, right, we've talked about this before and we're fortunate to get them in. On the community front, we did a lot last month, we, as always, worked with Kathy Recreation, they do an excellent job helping us out. And we had a large barbecue for our Pecan of School and all the families. On Olympic Day, had to be about 700 people we cooked for. We actually had to buy a second grill, which is a good, that's a good problem with that many people. We had our, their hockey season come to a close, we're starting a new one in September. We had 583 police calls and police blotters in the month of June, 17 arrests, which is low, which is good. We don't always want to have a lot of arrests, so that was a good thing. So we had 17, which is low, which is good. We've been doing heavy patrol and speed enforcement and aggressive driving patrol on Route 202. I went out there myself with the LiDAR unit, we have a radar unit, several of them built-in or patrol cars, we have a LiDAR. LiDAR is a laser radar, which is handheld, it's battery operated, and it actually can download the speeds of every vehicle and the distance, I hit them out. And I know the mayor and I spoke about this last week, the day we spoke, I was going out. We had probably 100 cars, 100, maybe 100 to 200 cars, average speed was 33 miles an hour. I set up next to 101 Wayne Avenue, past the bridge going north towards the lake on the eastbound side.
Is there any way?
And I ran LiDAR myself.
Sorry, is there any way to defeat this technology?
I'm sorry, I just, I didn't hear it.
Is there any way to defeat this technology, this LiDAR?
No, no, I'll tell you, Dan, it's funny, Dan, because what it does is the second, it's actually, it's a very interesting radar, has sights in it, you have to sight it, drop it down towards the license plate and it beeps and assures you that this is the right speed. It's pretty incredible, it's a unit we bought last year through some of our equipment, Fonseca money, and it's worked out excellent and we can actually see, it actually does a compilation of the exact speed and the average, so the average speed was 33. We know there's people that are going a lot faster because I've been out there myself, writing them tickets out there, but it is just good to get a base of where we are, so. But it worked out good, we've been doing a lot of that, we're 202. Our officers will be doing a shirt fundraiser for an NYPD officer that was killed last week, we'll be doing that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and probably into, into next week, the next two weeks as well.
Great.
All the money we raised goes back into the family. Last time, for Sergeant Tizolo in the 43rd Precinct, we raised over $20,000 for his family. This officer was a single mother with three children, so we're going to do everything we can do in our power to make as much as we can for this family. On our end, a lot NYPD officers live in our community, Mayor's retired New York City officer, multiple officers live in this area and we appreciate your support.
I can tell you one thing from the, from, from knowing so many people in law enforcement myself, that the outreach and the, the way they look upon your fundraisers and the shirts and what you do for all the other officers in New York and throughout the country is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know that.
No, I appreciate it. I got calls from all over the state today, supporting us, and I do appreciate from other departments. I appreciate it, we'll be going out tomorrow, several officers will be going out to the funeral, including myself, will be going down into the box. We appreciate all your support and everything.
Great. While you're here, I just received a communication from Mayor Carl Wright from Slotsburg in regards to Officer Andrew York. And on behalf of the Village of Slotsburg, I wish to commend you for your outstanding police work in helping the confused senior citizen. Your alertness, dedication, concern, and commitment to be of service are most admirable. You had the most positive impact on the life of this gentleman and his family. It must be most gratifying for you to know that you may have prevented a very serious injury or even death. I am confident that the family of this gentleman is most appreciative. Your actions in this incident places you and the police department in the most positive light. Suffolk in general and the police department in particular are most fortunate to have someone of your caliber as a law enforcement officer. As always, please accept my best wishes in all endeavors, very truly yours, Carlos Wright. That really speaks to Suffolk Police Department and the leadership of the police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. And I just, to give you a background, anybody, just a very, real quick background, Officer York was on patrol about 4:00 in the morning and he saw an elderly gentleman sitting in a vehicle for a while, thought maybe he was waiting for the, to get a paper, waiting for it to start up, and he stayed there for a while, he went by a couple times, 15, 20 minutes, was keeping an eye on the car, finally walked up to the gentleman and to check on his well-being and the gentleman thought he was in Allentown, Pennsylvania. He said he was coming from Allentown, going to Allentown, and it was a dementia Alzheimer's patient whose daughter had reported him missing to the police in Allentown, and he drove out of here from Allentown in the way he was, and at that point, we're just lucky we got him. For his own safety, his daughter drove out from Allentown to bring him back. So thank you, Mayor, for that and I appreciate you reading that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank Officer York also. Thank you, thank Officer York also.
You checked at the time, getting in.
Okay, at this time, I would like to invite the audience, I would open it up to the audience participation, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak?
Joe Maraglino, 65 Wayne Avenue.
Hi, Joe.
I'm basically up here to say a lot of thanks to a lot of different people, starting with the mayor. When this man first came in, obviously he came out to our street, saw the problems, addressed everything as best he could. Chief of Police also, come on out, and see what we can do to help everything. The gentleman over here, the grant writer, got money to help us get sidewalks, the unfortunate thing that took place on Suffering, it was a tragedy, but in the long run, we bettered our street through working together, so, I just had to say something as far as thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, and that's what we need to continue, we gotta, we have to remember to work together, if the community doesn't come out and speak about it, how would we be made aware of these different scenarios? Also, Chief, if you would, we, we work together again in the community on Ramapo Avenue in regards to the stop sign, which was very effective, so, by doing so, it's going to work out.
No, it's greatly appreciated, believe me, uh, also Joe Hunt in the Department of Public Works, they took down the trees right away, and they stump grinded, everything, everything, it's like-
Moving along.
It's going, it's going, this is beautiful, thank you all very much. Thank you, Joe.
I couldn't get him, he went too fast.
Maybe something like that.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Joan Carosa, I live on Center Street, and that's my, my request, we have had a lot of work done, they've had the pipes put in, which is great, I would like to know if and when Center Street is going to get paved, because it needs it very badly.
Okay, Charles, can we elaborate a little bit on Center Street and the gas line replacement and paving, that's continuing?
She's on Center Street?
Center Street.
Well, as, as most people know, O and R replaced the gas main on Center Street, um, and we do have plans of paving Center Street, however, um, we need to, um, ensure that their work is done, and it's done properly, and we're in negotiations with them to possibly have them reimburse us for the work that they would normally do, and then we'd be able to incorporate it into our paving projects. So, um, will be done this year, um, I would say that, um, you know, we're gonna obviously try to get it done as soon as we can, um, most likely no, no later than the end of October.
So they're gonna enter into like a cost sharing, since, since O and R ripped the roads up and did the, the gas main replacement, they're gonna share the cost with us to repave the entire road, so that, but as Mr. Zawiki said, it should be around October, November.
Thank you, I look forward to it.
Thank you for coming out.
Hello, I'm Sarah Mondale, um, I was the former head of the Suffering Civic Association, I recognize some people here who I know, um, but I'm coming tonight, uh, to, um, mention a couple of things, one is that I'm, I'm very sorry to see that the Suffering Farmers Market is not operating this year for the first time since 2000, and Frank was one of the people that, uh, helped us create the market years ago and get it started, and there are, I think it's a loss for the village and a loss for the downtown, the Saturday morning is dead in that part of town now, it's just a parking lot, and it used to be a place with music and people, and I would encourage the village to look into, um, there's a woman named Miriam Haas, organization called Community Markets, that Frank probably knows her, who, um-
Who that is, Frank?
She is, run markets in villages that basically pay for themselves, in Haverstraw, um, I think Spring Valley, and a number of towns in Westchester too, so-
So she's like a market manager, or a promoter?
She's not just a manager, she's someone who brings her vendors, and, uh, you know, when she commits to a village, she brings the vendors, the market kinda pays for itself, and she, you know, she's more than a manager, but-
Okay.
Uh, and then the other thing, um, I wanted to bring up, um, has to do with trees in the village, and I think some of you got a copy of my letter about trees being cut down on personal property in my neighborhood, um, I'm at 28 Hillside Avenue, and I moved to the village in, um, 1999, I've been here for a long time now, partly because I love the old trees, and, um, it's really pained me to see so many century-old trees coming down in my neighborhood, I feel like the character of the neighborhood is changing, and I, um, contacted Sandy Sted recently, because I was head of the Suffering Civic Association, we had started a tree committee, and Sandy, whom you know, I think, uh, started the, um, memory tree program in the downtown, and she had an issue with trees on the median strip that belonged to the village, the ones that I see going down around me are old, old, big trees, way over a foot in diameter, uh, oaks and trees like that, that are coming down on personal property, and, you know, there are about, I would say 25 of them at least that have come down in the past couple of years within a five-house radius of where I live.
Oh, okay.
And, um, the other day, this was in early June, um, a neighbor adjoining my house cut down four or five huge trees, you know, and I, he, his property backed up on mine, he's on woodland, and I asked, um, Sandy to look into this, because it, it just is getting to be too much, you know, the grinder was going all weekend, um, none of the neighbors could think or talk, or, you know, we're all in our houses, some of them left their houses, they couldn't stand the noise, and, um, and then the trees at that property were gone, and suddenly my house was being blasted by the sun, and the temperature went up 10 degrees, and I don't have air conditioning, uh, I was never notified of any of this, and this went on for some time, and I went to, then the chainsaw started the following weekend, starting in Saturday morning, went all the way to the evening, you know, nobody could think in their houses again, then the next day, started again on a Sunday morning, and I was at my wits' end, and I went over to the neighbor and asked him, uh, when, when is this gonna end, you know, we can't talk in our houses anymore, this is crazy, can't talk on the phone, the whole back of my house is unusable because of this constant chainsaw noise, which was 20 feet from my house, and he said, uh, you know, he screamed at me to get off his property, uh, said I had no right to be on his property, and I, I said, "Well, do you have a permit?", and he, I called the village about it, yes, he did have a permit, but, um, nonetheless, he was yelling at me, backing me down the driveway, and saying, "You get off my property", and I said, "Well, all right, I'm contacting the Building Department, because this is unacceptable", and he said, "I am the Building Department for the Village of Suffering, this neighbor of mine", and, um, so, I just wanna say that, you know, I had contacted the village about this, um, I, I said, in fact, when he said that, I said, "Well, then I'm calling the police", so I called the police when I, because he was acting in a very threatening, bullying manner, and when I got home, I did call the police, and I said, "What's the rule here? For noi- what's the noise ordinance in the Village of Suffering? Is he allowed to run a chainsaw all weekend next to my yard, you know, making it uninhabitable, our houses?", and they said, they read me the list, they were very polite, the Police Department said, "Yes, they can have lawn mowers", I said, "I'm okay with lawn mowers, because they stop, you know, they go for a while and then they stop, but a chainsaw, this is an industrial use, you know, going on on the weekends, so, I, I wanna ask the village two things, I'm not trying to get my neighbor in trouble, I'm not trying to rat out my neighbors or anything like that, I get along with my neighbors, I just wanna say, first of all, the Village of Suffering, in my mind, they need a new permitting policy that's more sensitive to the character of the neighborhood, and is based on sensible preservation of trees, this is too many big old trees that have come down in our neighborhood at once, and our neighborhood is changing, the, the village should, um, you know, see trees as an asset, they provide shade, they cool the air, uh, it's part of what makes Suffering a beautiful village, um, they are also good against global warming, you know, they absorb CO2 and all that, so, I wanna know why the village, every time I call the village about more trees coming down, they tell me, "Well, they have a permit", well, I wanna know who's giving out these permits, and don't they have to have an inspection, I read the ordinance, don't they have to have an inspection by an arborist before they're allowed to take down these huge trees, and, and shouldn't, if it's gonna affect a house next door, don't you think the neighbor should be notified, you know, with a big stand of trees coming down? So, um, I, I feel like the village should be consulting with other villages, to look at their tree ordinances, and, um, see what they are, and, and I really feel like we shouldn't allow this to go on without looking into it more, because I'm, I'm alarmed, I've taken pictures each time, I've shown them to Sandy Sted, and, and it's getting to be, that's why I came out to the meeting tonight, because it's getting to be a, the neighborhood's changing, and, um, I don't think just because, you know, the man who told me, "Well, this is my property, I can do whatever I want on my property", I said, "No, you can't, you can't build a shopping mall on your property, we have zoning laws for this, you know, you can't build whatever you want on your property, you can't do whatever you want on your property, there are laws about this, and permits that have to be issued", and he knows that, obviously because he works for the Building Department, but, you know, this is something I feel that needs to be, um, looked into.
Okay.
The trees, number one, and then the noise, the noise ordinance also, that is another problem.
Would you like to leave your contact information, and I'll follow up with someone in the village?
Sure.
And then, Kathy, would you mind taking her contact information?
Sure.
And when you finish, um, and we'll, we'll, we'll get back to you, we'll get some answers, we'll, we'll talk on the phone.
I think Sandy forwarded my original email, where I detailed all the trees that had come down around my house, and, you know, she said that she'd given it to the trustees and the mayor, but if not, I can forward that also.
Okay, yeah, I, I would like to speak with you afterwards.
In the meantime, if you wanna read a really-
Pardon me?
In the meantime, if you wanna read a really strong tree ordinance, look at Montebello's.
Oh, really?
That's a very strong tree ordinance.
It's the strongest I've ever seen.
Is that right?
And it was upheld in court.
Okay, that's interesting. Right next door.
I don't know how far we wanna go, but just read that.
I mean, it's not that I think that nobody should be allowed to take down a tree, that's not at all what I'm saying, you know, I'm, but I am saying they should be regarded as an asset, and it gets me alarmed when I see so many coming down in a short period, you know, what is that about, what, I don't get it, so, and, okay, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, where are we? Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Come on up, step up. Oh, Jim, hold on, Jim.
Hold on, Jim.
Someone right behind you.
Hi, um, my name is Rory Paternoster, I live in Bon Air, and, uh, this coming Sunday, we're going to have Family Day at the Suffering Pool, and it's from 12 to 3, I believe, at which time at 3 o'clock, they chase all the people out that don't belong to the pool. Now I invite my family and my friends, and it's rather uncomfortable when the lifeguards come around and ask them to leave, so, since it's Family Day, I'm hoping that you will let them stay.
So a Family Day, which is from, Kathy, can you speak to these points? 12 to 3.
Hi there, everybody, so, uh, speaking to Phyllis's question, this came up about two or three years ago, and three years ago, the previous mayor had said that at 3 o'clock, the activities were over, and we wouldn't ask family members to go, so, I guess it depends on the board if we wanna continue with that, previous to that, in many, many years since Family Day has begun, at 3:00 PM, anyone that was not a village resident, and who do not have a village pass, was asked to leave, but again, it was changed, I, I think after Phyllis's request before, that residents were allowed, residents were allowed to bring guests, and guests were allowed to stay.
Okay.
So we have been for the last three years, allowing guests to stay.
No, they had to go home.
No, the last couple of years, we haven't asked.
You were allowed to stay.
Yeah.
Well, the last couple of years, but before that, are we going to do that?
Well, you mentioned that last year, we had people leave.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Right, right, we didn't-
All right, you know what we're gonna do, Kathy, we're, um, we're gonna discuss this-
Yeah.
Um, you know, tomorrow, and we'll make a decision on this tomorrow, because I don't have enough information going back and forth with which years we're accepted and which we're not, just let us get together tomorrow and we'll talk about it.
What was her name there?
I'm sorry, what is your name, miss?
Rory Paternoster.
How do you spell?
Did you get that?
Are you yourself a member of the, the village pool?
Yes.
Kathy, do you know how many bathers are allowed, um, in the pool?
Sure.
And what kind of attendance you usually get at the Family Day? Because that could cause a conflict.
Right, pool capacity is 196 people, so if we exceed that, then we do have to ask people to go, just because of the, the amount of people that's allowed at the pool. Family Day has been typically very crowded, which we are so happy about, we love having people there, so that has been, that was the reasoning behind having guests go at, at 3:00 PM, but again, I do know that Rory and a few other members had asked a couple of years ago, so we've been keeping it as is, as of 3:00, we have not asked people to go, so-
But this is also open to non-pool pass holders?
It is open.
Family Day.
It is open to the public.
Okay, so, well, let's discuss it tomorrow.
Yes, we'll discuss more.
All right, we have to change the tape here. It's beeping.
Let's get that. Okay, Kathy.
I just wanted to make one thing clear, though, it's not open to everybody, if you're a village of resident, village of Suffering resident, you can bring a guest, it's not open to everybody just to come in, I just wanted to make sure that-
Say it again?
So, a non-resident couldn't come without being a guest of a village of Suffering resident, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Come on up.
Phyllis Kazin, 192 Parkside, I have four issues, one issue, and I'll get that out of the way, uh, I don't know, the traffic coming down 59 from, um, Hemian, all the way through the village, from Friday night to whole weekends, unbelievable, how could we set another project up there? It, it's gonna be almost impossible, and in, I avoid, or even noon time, the traffic has gotten crazy in our village, okay, that's number one. Number two, and Kathy, this is my question to you, I do not understand why balls are a topic at the pool, and are allowed in the pool, now, if you wanna have an hour where the kids can come in and play ball, fine, I don't feel like getting hit with balls, and you've created a problem, because the next day, every size imaginable, including the balls we don't allow, that you blow up, you know, the plastic ones, came over, and they're playing, and it's, no other pool allows it. Pardon me?
Stay with the microphone.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I'll turn the microphone in me, I, I haven't heard of any pool that allows it, and in the past, we have been hit, because, you know, they're kids, they're not paying, they're playing, they're not interested, they're gonna bop on the head, and they're not purposely doing it, but it is an issue, and I think we really, uh, you know, there should be no balls, or if you wanna have balls, have it, just like you have an adult swim, have its balls swim, or whatever you wanna call it, that way, because it, it's really a problem.
Okay, all right, we're gonna address that, we'll discuss that too tomorrow, next? You have-
Yeah, one more, two days in a row since heavy rain, we've had flooding on the, the road going to the pool, which I'm sure you know about.
Yes.
The second day, when I went home, and you could go through at that point, the water seemed to be coming not from the brook, but from the ball field, so is there a drain that isn't open, or is a broken pipe, or, because if that continues to happen, we'll have major problems.
We're, we're actually looking into that.
Oh, to see what-
That drain, yeah.
Because with all the heavy rains that we've had in the past, I don't remember that ever happening before.
Yeah, it was heavy rain, very heavy.
When the water came off-
Okay, what else do we have, you have one more item?
Yeah, I forgot it.
Oh, you've got it, all right. That's all right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Now Jim doesn't wanna talk.
No, that's okay. Okay, let's move on.
What time is it?
Yes.
What time is it?
It's now 7:52, I'd like to open a public hearing, proposed amendments to Chapter 76 regarding filming in the Village of Suffering. Mr. Cresch- Mr. Creschauer.
Okay. Many of you that are here know that last year, we adopted a local law with regard to filming in the Village of Suffering. For the past probably three, four weeks, we've been approached by a number of major film companies. And when I mean major, we're talking Academy Award-winning directors. And when they reviewed our requirements under the local law, they weren't clear about certain things and needed additional flexibility. So, I reviewed basically the requests that were made. And anything that wouldn't have an adverse impact on community residents or weakening the requirements of notification, I did not change, because this really has to be a balanced approach. While it's always a nice feature to have large movie companies find your municipality an attractive place to film, it can also have an adverse impact on the residents, the businesses, et cetera. So, you really have to balance that. So, the proposed changes, some of them had to do with fees. In the original version of the local law, we didn't have an actual application fee. Now, we're suggesting that we provide an application fee. We break down the per-day permit fee, which we did charge before, but we didn't break it down per day. And we now base it on the size of the crew, because that impacts how many people will be involved in the project. We kept the reimbursement for police, DPW, and other involved village employees or agencies at time and a half. And also, an additional cost for the usage of the recreation building. We... Or a change, an additional change that was made was filming shall be permitted only Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, except in the business district, where filming shall be permitted only Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM through 8:00 PM, unless approved by the village board of trustees. In this connection, the arrival and setup of equipment and vehicles and the breakdown of such equipment and vehicles at the end of the filming shall be accomplished within the permitted time period. So, it made it more clear as to, you know, setting up counts in terms of timing and breaking up counts in terms of timing, when you have to be out of there. And an approved permit issued by the village clerk listing each film location must be obtained prior to any filming operations commencing. A little more flexibility was given with regard to the total number of days potentially that a filming company could operate in the village in a calendar year. It still says that it's limited to six days during one calendar year, but I added in a proviso unless approved by the board of trustees. One filmmaker in particular said six days would make it so that it would be impossible for them to film in the village. They need additional time. I think that covers the changes that are being proposed, and they are highlighted for anyone who has a copy of the local law. Also want to make it clear that also on this agenda is an actual resolution to approve filming from a...
I have the resolution.
...large filming company. And this is an example of the extended time period, July 25th through August 6th. So, the local law would have to be approved in order for the filming permit to be approved. This is a public hearing.
So... Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to the amendment to the Section 76, filming in the Village of Suffering?
Hi, Paul Gerard, 2 Cross Street. Just a general question. I mean, it's great that they want to do this. What's in it for us with making these changes? I mean, what benefits do we get? I mean, for example, are we charging fees that are over and above our costs so that we reap some kind of benefit by this? Or... Because, as you said, it is sometimes an inconvenience if it goes on for a long time. So, just curious, what's in it for us if we can go ahead and make these changes?
Very good question. Number one, we would be now charging an application fee, where we didn't in the original local law. Number two, by breaking it out for the permit fees based on the crew size, we have additional monetary benefits. So, for example, a crew size of 3 to 15 is $1,000 per day for the permit. And that's for the first day. Thereafter, $750 a day from day two to completion. We didn't break it out that way before. If the crew size is greater than 15 people, the first day is $1,500, and from day two to completion, it's $1,000. On top of that, they have to provide security, insurance, and reimburse us for the cost of police, DPW, Kathy, or anyone from her department, and the cost of the use of the recreation building. And as I said before, it's time and a half. So, it could be that the majority of the week, we're only paying regular time, but we're still going to be reimbursed time and a half. I think you were at a meeting that we had prior to the adoption of this local law, where we had to, like, go on the fly and try to figure things out, because there was no guidance. And we ended up recouping the time and a half costs. We got the security and the insurance, and I think they made a large contribution to the Clifford Theater or local recreation. So, now, we would have really more guidance. You don't... You don't want to over... The state has, like, given guidance on this. You don't want to overcharge, because they won't come. Not every production company is a large production company. Some of them are just private film companies. Some are, you know, for educational uses. And, you know, I don't know how it's working out, whether they're going to be using our community center, but I think we told them a price, and they're like, "Oh, I think we're going to check with area churches." So, I don't know that they're going to be using our community center. So, you don't want to overprice yourself out of the market. But certainly, it is an opportunity to recoup not only our actual costs, but additional fees as well. Just not to the point of, you know, dissuading these companies from filming here.
Right. No, I agree. I understand. It's a balance. But, you know, obviously, they keep coming back here. There's some appeal that we have. There's some draw. It's an asset, if you will. So, I mean, I think it's good that we try to take advantage of it to some degree, over and above what it costs us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's also an economic boom for the businesses here in the village. We developed this plan, this permitting process, through the New York State Office of Filming, I think that's what it's called, and through looking at other municipalities' permitting process. And the lead was White Plains, I believe. And we spoke directly with them, and together, we combined our permitting process along with theirs, and it's a... And also with the production company's help. We want them to come back. We fall within the radius of, I think it's 40 miles. Kathy, do you recall the distance? 33 miles. So, we're right there, and they just love coming here. So... Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, so I have the resolution here. Resolution adopting Local Law 5 of 2017 regarding filming in the Village of Suffering.
Just before we do that, two things. Number one, we need to close the public hearing.
Oh, jeez. Forgot about that. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor? All right, motion passes.
And then, we also need to type the action under Seeker as a type-two action, requiring no further review under Seeker.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Now, I have the resolution adopting the Local Law 5 of 2017 regarding filming in the Village of Suffering. Resolved that the village board adopts Local Law 5 of 2017, amending Chapter 76, filming in the Village of Suffering, of the code of the Village of Suffering. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay. Oh, you want that?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Oh, you have that. You have this?
Which one?
B. Okay. Virginia and the village clerk. There you go.
No, I don't have it. Hold on. Let me see.
All right, now, we don't have Virginia.
Right.
We'll just do it by a motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. All right. Suffering Planning Board letter regarding AAA paving and contracting, Inc.
All right, so we're going to be... Do we declare ourselves Suffering Planning?
Planning Board.
That's the Planning Board, a letter from the Planning Board.
Okay. All this refers to is that there's an application made to the Suffering Planning Board with regard to AAA paving and contracting, Inc., at 2 Wayne Avenue, Suffering, New York. Don't know the details of this application, but pursuant to Seeker, the Planning Board is advising not only the board of trustees of Suffering, but Ramapo, Locken County Drainage Agency, New York State DEC, Army Corps of Engineers, and the Village of Suffering Zoning Board of Appeals, that they've declared themselves the lead agent for that applications... For that applications... For that application.
Say it again.
And that we have 30 days from the date of this letter to object. My recommendation is that we not object. They are more suited to handling Seeker than the legislative body.
Why are we doing this?
Taking an action.
So, we don't have to do anything?
No action.
No action.
Next.
All right, next is a block party requested by Jack Myers of 90 East Maple Avenue for July 29th. And I think they want to start around 9:00 in the morning, Mayard, to 10:00 at night.
9:00 to 10:00. Okay, do I have a motion for the block party request, 90 East Maple Avenue, July 29th, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hold on. Subject to all the conditions that we require for...
It's an invitation.
...block parties, which, as Ms. Hertzman points out, is an invitation.
An invitation to the...
No, I'm only kidding. We really do have certain requirements for block parties.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Charles Sawicki?
Good evening, Board. I'd like to update the Board on the James Street Santeri Sewer Abatement Project. It is currently underway and is approximately 80% complete. I am requesting payment authorization for application for payment number one in the amount of $71,455. And application for payment number two in the amount of $81,839.40 payable to Gemros Utility LLC for the Santeri Sewer Abatement Project on James Street.
Two questions. One, is that within budget?
Well, I'll let Michael speak to that.
This is part of the sanitary sewer abatement project that's being financed by the EFC Financing. So, we get this paid, and then we get reimbursed as part of that financing.
Okay, so we have it. We're... We have enough money.
It's within the budget, yes.
Okay.
That's question one here, too. Okay. Okay, ever the resolution authorizing payment number one and number two to Gemros Utilities for the sanitary sewer abatement project resolved that the board of trustees authorized payment one in the amount of $71,455 and payment two in the amount of $81,839.40 to Gemros Utilities for sanitary sewer abatement project, James Street Santeri Sewer. to Gemrose Utilities for sanitary sewer abatement project, James Street Sanitary Sewer, sanitary replacement. The AII, the AIA document G702-1992, application and certification of payment and the certified payroll have been reviewed by Charles Sawicki and have been deemed acceptable for payment. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Who made that motion, Mayor?
Moira.
No.
Moira, then.
I have it, I have it, okay. Okay.
Okay. I don't have it. I don't have this other resolution, hold on, let me see it. Okay. What do you have next?
Okay. I am requesting authorization to issue a contract to the low bidder, Tilcon New York Inc., in the amount of $388,845 for roadway improvements, phase-eight project. The contract is based on item unit cost, costs of estimated quantities and based on available funds.
So do we have the funding in place?
No, which is why I added, "subject to the procurement and receipt of bonding money and all required documentations and review of same by Village Attorney."
But we also do have some funding currently in place, is that correct?
Actually, that's, uh, the question that I was going to have, we have about $60,000 for street repaving that has not been spent yet, which already has been borrowed, however, I thought that some, or if not all of this money is going to be coming from CHIPS, is that correct or not?
Um, yes, I mean, uh, it would be CHIPS plus that $60,000 that Michael spoke about. Now, this is, uh, again, this dollar amount is not going to be what we spend, it's gonna, it's, it's based on estimated quantities, so.
So it could be more?
Pardon me?
It could be more?
Well, we're not going to spend more than what we have, obviously, so we need to, uh, determine the exact amount and be able to back into it to see what we can get done for the amount of money that we do have. Do we have 300 and, uh, plus the 60?
Yeah, just, just to clarify what we have, we have unspent money from prior years in our consolidated highway improvement program money, that's CHIPS, New York State Aid. We also have New York Pave, which is another state aid, and there's also another, um, paving aid that comes from New York State that's relatively new in the last two years, which was in the Extreme Winter Recovery Aid, or Repair Aid, it's EWR anyhow the initials are. Those three, uh, forms of aid, um, can be used for any type of street resurfacing, the CHIPS money can be used for the street resurfacing, and impertinences there too, such as curbs and sidewalks. So when we look at the money to be spent, as I've mentioned to the Board before, we want to look at any other projects that we may have, for instance, Wayne Avenue, we have money that we know we have from CDBG, but we may have a contribution required on our part, as well as maybe some additional money that may be needed to complete that project. We want to make sure we have enough, uh, of that money in CHIPS left to use to help fund that project as well.
So for the Wayne Avenue project, we need the, the 10% of the bid award?
Correct.
Right, so, I mean, I'm just rounding, that's an additional 30,000, and then any additional?
Right.
That we may fall short in that project?
Correct. So we'll take a look at this, and as, as Charles said, it's a, it's a materials basis, um, bid, so we only, we can only go as far as whatever the paving will take us, that budget will take us.
All right, so what's your recommendation in terms of, uh, uh, the wording, um, that, um, you would change from "subject to the procurement and receipt of bonding money"?
Subject to the availability of, uh, New York State Aid in the form of CHIPS, EWR, and NYPave.
What was the amount, again, that we have available throughout the, the CHIPS and the, and the New York Pave?
I believe it's over, it's over $400,000.
$400,000. Charles, the, um...
Are we talking about South Street?
The ongoing problem of flooding at Memorial Drive. Are CHIPS funds applicable for any repairs to the drainage, the sewer system that is apparently collapsed and not allowing for the, the surface water to drain?
No, however, we do have, um, some funding in our recommended capital projects, uh, for the 2018 budget.
Okay.
So it'd be, it would need to be a separate project.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing acceptance of the low bid for roadway improvements, phase-eight project, whereas the Board of Trustees has consulted with the Director of Public Works with respect to awarding a low bid for the roadway improvements, phase-eight project, and whereas the low bid in the amount of $388,845 from Tilcon New York Inc., and is based on item unit cost of estimated quantities. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of the Village of Suffering accepts the low bid for the roadway improvement, phase-eight project in the amount of $388,845 from Tilcon New York, subject to the procurement of New York State Aid in the nature of CHIPS, New York Pave, and Extreme Winter, Extreme Winter, what?
Recovery.
Recovery, thank you. And all required documents and reviewed by, of the same by the Village Attorney. Be therefore resolved that the Mayor is authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the Village of Suffering. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Can you just give me, because I don't re, I don't have my, all of my notes with me, just tell me again, this project, the general locale of the improvements?
Well, uh, we do, we were work, working off a list of approximately 15 roadways, we're not going to be able to do all of them. Um, we do have, um, some of the roadways, we talked about, uh, Cross Street, um, um, and, you know, um, you know, a couple of the roadways that, uh, you know, we have on the list that need to be done, but we actually have to take the amount of money that we have and assess the, the roadways that need to be done, and you almost have to back into it, because one roadway will cost a certain amount of money to get done, another roadway would cost a certain amount of money. It ki, it's kind of a puzzle, you put the puzzle together, and, and you, you need to come up with the, uh, the amount that we, we have available, uh, to spend on these projects.
Okay.
So, for example, Yorkshire, there's a section of Yorkshire that, uh, is definitely going to be part of this work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and here's a few, here's a number of other roadways.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes.
Okay. I am requesting authorization to submit a professional service RFP for the South Street Emergency Generator. The RFP will be due at the end of business on August 25th, 2017.
So I have a resolution here authorizing, a resolution authorizing a request for proposal for the South Street Emergency Generator, resolved the Village Board hereby authorizes Charles Sawicki to send out a professional service request for proposals for South Street Emergency Generator. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So on this, I believe that the discussion should really relate to being able to somehow find additional funding or, or grant money through either the Senator's office, through Ellen Jaffey or David Carlucci's office, and work with, um, Fred Reller, our grant writer, and see if there's something available for this project.
Well, yes, we actually, um, you know, through the years, we've act, it had, it became a priority a number of years ago, and, um, we've reached a point now that truly needs to be done, so, um, it is a, is a high priority project. And it was that, you know, as you know, it was part of New York Rising, but it was excluded because it's in the, was in the floodway. So we had anticipated that we would have funding for this project as part of that, uh, New York Rising program, um, but then was excluded because it was in the floodway.
So obtaining the RFP will give us, um, identify the cost necessary for us to make these repairs, or replacements?
Right, well, that'd be, yes, that'd be part of it, uh, and it'd be a matter of, um, generating the bid documents so that we could go out for bids and solicit bids for the entire project.
Then we'd have to find the funding source, this is going to be an expensive project.
Well, we do have some monies, again, in the projected, uh, uh, capital projects list for 2018, where I believe we have 165,000 that were, was on that list.
Okay. Um, Mr. Janito, do you have any comment to the, uh...
Sure, I, I just want to remind the, uh, the Board and everyone else that, uh, the capital projects list is exactly that, it's a list, it's not a funded project, unlike the rest of our budget, which we are financing by either taxes or, or some form of aid or, or, uh, other items that we've already identified the sources. Um, this, this money is, for the most part, with exception of some items on that list for street resurfacing, to be funded by CHIPS, the rest of it is to be funded by debt.
Debt.
So, uh, we are, I, I received a list of the priority projects from Mr. Sawicki, as well as secondary and tertiary projects, and, along with the, uh, financing that he believes will be necessary to fund those projects. I'm putting those together to go to our, uh, bond counsel and financial advisors to give us, uh, their advice in terms of the timing and of, of issuing debt for that. Once we have that, we'll come back to the Board with the associated bond resolutions. Now, once we adopt a bond resolution, does not mean that we have to borrow the money right away. We will borrow the money if we need it, but in the meantime, it doesn't prevent us from going for grants or aid or other forms of, um, reimbursement, which would reduce the amount that we actually have to borrow.
So, and, we can go, move forward with this resolution?
This doesn't bind us to anything.
Right, but at the same time, we will still seek any other funding sources or grant money?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? No, I had a motion, I had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, I, uh, am requesting an exec, executive session to address the personnel matter.
Okay, well, we, we will hold an executive session. Finance Department, Mr. Janito.
Thank you, Mayor, we have a couple of items here, one was the capital project financing that I just mentioned, uh, we're putting that together, and we'll be discussing with our bond counsel and financial advisors as to the best course of action to take in terms of financing those projects, and we will be coming back to the Board with a bond resolution at some point in the future. Uh, also, we received a, uh, note from the, or email from the Environmental Facilities Corp. today, asking or presenting to us what their financing for the current sewer abatement project will be. You know that some of the work was completed and we spent some of the money, and, uh, tonight Charles presented us with some additional payments against that project. So, we will be looking over the documents from the EFC, because there is a point in time where they go to long-term financing, and they will do that, um, every year, pretty much. So, uh, we'll be working with them on that. The, uh, one thing that's interesting to note is that we were able to get the EFC financing at a AAA rate, which is the EFC rate, and, uh, much, much better in terms for our purposes and in terms of getting the financing. What's really nice about that as well, though, is within the next five years, even if we go to long-term financing with the EFC, within the next five years, if for some reason, the point score that we got increases, and we become reachable for the subsidized financing, they will refinance the unsubsidized financing?
Yeah.
And provide us with subsidized financing at 50% of the AAA interest rate, which you can't get any better than that.
Wow, that's good, okay.
Uh, that's the good news on, that's pretty much our update.
Great, all right. Thank you very much. Mr. Kreshaw?
Okay, um, as I alluded to before, when I talked about the, uh, amendments to the filming local law, uh, we have a resolution, uh, seeking to authorize Greedy Hippo LLC to film at 10 Cypress Road, uh, July 25th, 2017 through August 4th, 2017. Uh, this company is located, uh, in New York City, uh, and the name of the film will be The Coolest Girl in the World, um, and now therefore reads, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the permit of Greedy Hippo LLC, and it authorizes that the Mayor just sign the permit application, um, and that application, uh, that should be noted, was created by, uh, Trustee Hertzman, um, authorizing Greedy Hippo LLC to film at 10 Cypress Road from July 25th, 2017 through August 4th, 2017. The sports, the Board specifically grants an extension to the limitation of filming days in 76.4 Rules and Regulations, appeals waiver of regulations of Local Law Number Five of 2017, that was the local law that was adopted tonight, um, and subject to the submission of all required documentation, approval of the neighbors, and payment of the required fees.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
I don't get that.
Okay.
Nothing, I'll explain it to you.
Oh, okay.
Good?
Okay. Trustees, Ms. Hertzman?
I'm silent at the moment.
Mr. Haggen?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Zussman?
Join Ms. Hertzman and Mr. Haggen in their silence.
Your silence is deafening. Okay. Okay, the Mayor, update his... Okay, so I have an update for Route 202 and a paving project granted by New York State, New York State Project to Enhance Safety and Improve Traffic Flow, um, 12.8 miles of Route 202 from Route 59 to the Village of Suffering, in the Village of Suffering, to Route 306 in the town of Ramapo. It's a $3.5 million project that we were awarded here in the village to repave the entire length of 202 within the Village of Suffering. So that's very good news. I have a resolution reappointing Robert Yodowitz as Village Prosecutor for the Village of Suffering on a contract basis effective August 1st, 2017 through July 31st, 2018. Whereas Robert Yodowitz has been a practicing attorney in New York State for over 25 years, and is a trial attorney specializing in the defense of various civil litigation matters, and whereas Robert Yodowitz has served as the Village of Suffering as a prosecutor for vehicle and traffic and zoning violations with distinction, and whereas the Board of Trustees wishes to continue its contract with him for said services, which is set to expire on July 31st, 2018. expire on July 31st, 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby reappoints Robert Yodowitz to the position of village prosecutor for a period, for the period, August 1st, 2017 through July 31st, 2018, on a flat fee basis of $1,500 per month, subject to the execution of a formal contract for said services. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign said contract on behalf of the Village of Suffering. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that my experience with Mr. Yodowitz has been really impressive. He has done a magnificent job for the village. He has brought in a lot of money for the village while performing his services admirably, and he has been nothing but an asset. So I support the Board in this action.
I concur with Mr.
Crashout?
Crashout's opinion. Mr. Yodowitz has been a great asset to the village, working strictly in the court, so that's what I have to say. Do I have, had the motion, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Getting tired.
If you speak real fast, I may have, I may not have the
Uh-oh. Okay, hold on, renewed consulting agreement with Kathy Van Sickle. I have it. Whereas the Board of Trustees approved the hiring of Kathy Van Sickle as a consultant in the village clerk's office at its April 14th, 2017 special board meeting to be effective April 17th, 2017, and whereas said consulting agreement was a period of one month, renewable monthly upon approval of the Board of Trustees. And for the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the consulting agreement with Kathy Van Sickle for an additional month, one month period. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in
If you didn't like it, I thought sure we would make
Second tape, no.
Discussion.
Poor Kathy.
You have to wait now for the tape.
Don't forget discussion, Mr. Mayor.
That's why I was trying to, that's why I was trying. Go ahead.
Go ahead, any, any discussion?
Yes.
We're running out of tapes.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, we had a motion and a second. Yeah. You got the second?
No, I didn't get to make the second.
All right, who seconded?
Hagan made the second.
Who did?
Mr. Hagan.
Oh, Frank.
Hertzman wants to have a discussion.
Okay, so Hagan got a double.
Hagan got a double.
Are we recording now?
Yes.
Mr. Janito, have you staffed the position originally vacated by Barbara Cotieris?
Yes.
So why are we continuing to renew these consulting agreements? Wasn't that to provide some, some aid in your department until we had a full-time staffer?
The, the Barbara Cotieris and Kathy Van Sickle, both of the work that they were doing is being, is going to be done by the new person. That person is in training right now to understand both of those tasks, so this additional month will allow her to phase into the, into the work.
And when did she begin?
The very end of June, I believe.
Last week.
I'm sorry?
Last week.
Oh, last week, I'm sorry.
Last week, and so do we anticipate by August 18th that she'll be up to speed?
Pretty much. If, if we need any additional work, and by the way, the contract is only on a per hour basis, so if we don't need them, either one of them, for any period of time, we don't necessarily have to utilize the services and pay them. It's not a fixed amount that they're, they're getting paid. It's an hourly amount based on the work that they actually, or assistance they provide.
Right, but it is a very high Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The resolution authorizing a renewal of the consulting agreement with Barbara Cotieris, July 17th, 2017 through August 18th, 2017. Whereas the Board of Trustees approved the hiring of Barbara Cotieris as a consultant in Treasuries Department at its April 14th, 2017 special board meeting to be effective April 17th, 2017. And whereas consulting agreement was a period of, on a one month, renewable monthly upon approval of the Village Board of Trustees. Now for, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the consulting agreement with Barbara Cotieris for an additional one month period. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? It's the same. Both contingent upon each other. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
One, two, three, four.
Okay.
We're going into executive session, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you gotta get the motion to
Have a motion to enter into an executive session?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Let's be very clear as to why we are going into
Hank made the motion, who seconded?
Hold on, hold on, Dan's making a
This is to discuss a personnel matter with regard to issues that a particular employee is having, and the Board is likely to exit executive session and re-enter the regular meeting and take action. So I want the public to understand that unlike, I think every other, for the most part, executive session that we've entered into, where we came out of executive session and just adjourned the meeting, there is a likelihood that there will be an action taken when we exit executive session and re-enter the regular meeting.
Motion to enter into executive session for personnel.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will adjourn to the office. Motion to re-enter the regular meeting?
I make the motion to re-enter the regular meeting.
Second and by?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
What time is it?
Okay.
It is 9:09.
9:09.
One after nine, now it's the one after 9:09.
Okay, before, before Mayor, I have a resolution, whereas the Village Board of Trustees had, has had an opportunity to review the employment record of employee number 11119. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board, that the Village Board of the Village of Suffering hereby terminates employee number 11119 as laborer effective July 11th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Aye, just to confirm, Ms. Hertzman? Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Zussman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Who seconded?
Hagan.
Frank. What time?
Time check, everybody left their watch at home.
9:11.
Ooh, don't put 9:11.
What time is it?
9:12.
9:12.
9:12. We're gonna keep saying it till it's 9:12.
Okay.
Thank you.